All right, greetings folks. Welcome, welcome. All right, I think I'm going to get started this evening. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our October 14th HUUSD Board Meeting. My name is Caitlin Hollister and I am Chair of the Harwood Unified Board, calling the board meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Please note that tonight's meeting is available on our YouTube channel, HU web app, on Mad River TV, as well as on Zoom. Tonight's board packet is online at husd.org/board. Please look to the right and scroll down to see our 2020-21 packets, and tonight's is the first link. Before I turn it over to our reports this evening, I want to extend my thanks tonight in particular to our principals, as October is National Principals Month. To be a principal is a demanding job under normal circumstances, and this year has been anything but. We are grateful for their endless problem solving, positive energy, and creative approaches in such unpredictable and stressful times. I also wanted to share a note from one of our principals, Kaya Cor, who wrote to me today and offered to have her words shared this evening. She writes, "I wish to publicly thank Christine Sullivan and Tari Smith, both of whom have shown a new kind of dedication to the school district in their willingness to serve as substitute teachers. Christine has twice stepped in to fill positions for which we could find no other substitute. We had a moment of some alarm today regarding an opening at WES for the next two days, but Tari is stepping in to help keep us afloat. Some of these absences are a result of COVID, someone or someone in the family experiencing symptoms and following the protocols of not returning until they can get tested. We want people to follow these protocols. They are an important part of our safety system. If this system only works when we have substitute teachers, with deep appreciation, Kaya." And I want to add to this thanks our appreciation of Kristen Rogers, who has also stepped up to be a nursing sub. Under normal circumstances, board members would not be working in schools. But as these are exceptional times, the Secretary of Education has granted waivers allowing our board members to volunteer and to be of service during the school day. So, thanks to you all. For members of the public listening tonight, please consider signing up to substitute in our schools. Know that you do not have to make a regular commitment to be in schools every day, but that your service is greatly needed and appreciated at this time. So, thank you again. First item tonight is our updates, and I'm going to invite board members to first ask questions of the superintendent. We had many updates this week from Bridget regarding the reopening plans to Step 3, her own goals, PCB info, the Remote Academy enrollment, a legislative update, and anti-racism resources. So, I would open it up first to questions for Bridget, and then we will go on to our student representatives this evening. All right, not seeing any questions. I think Bridget, you had a lot to write. Christine, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question. In your report, you talk about how the whole district's harmless for a change in ADM. Is that definite?
Oh, you're muted, Bridget.
And if it is, I guess, just trying to figure out how that relates to equalized pupils, since those are weighted when we get to the budget. So, how that might impact equalized pupils for the budget or not? I don't know if we'd still see those go down a bit, or if we should expect them to be the same as they were this past year.
Well, let me say good evening to everyone. It's nice to see you all here. I'm going to turn that over to Michelle. It is true, it's happened. Assuming that the governor is signing the bill, he may have signed it already. I have no reason to believe that he wouldn't. And that would be just last year's, and you know that equalized pupils is computed over a two-year average. So, let's have Michelle weigh in, Christine, with a little bit more specificity on that.
I don't know if Michelle is on yet, actually. So, we can save that question and get back to her, too. I'm just making sure that she's not in the attendees. Yeah.
She might need to be moved over.
I don't see her there yet, but it's early. Oh, Michelle, she is. Sorry, Michelle. I'm going to allow you to talk here, and then I'll move you over. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. So, yes, it is ADM that they're holding harmless, not equalized pupils. So, equalized pupils is a two-year weighted average. So, it's hard to exactly know. We asked this question at our business managers' meeting the other day, but essentially, if they are freezing ADM at the same place as they froze it last year, it should, you know, they're basically averaging two years together. So, I guess I'd like to look at it a little closer and maybe run some calculations and bring some estimates to you in an upcoming meeting, because I have to see, you know, last year, we were averaging the ADM from October 18 and October 19, and this year, we would be averaging October 19 with October 19. You know, and some of it also has the statewide weighting factor into it that plays into account. So, we're all trying to figure it out, and I don't want to answer, you know, off the cuff, but I'll look into it and see what it means. But it is really good news. I think that the legislature took this position, because it will mean that it changes far less than it would have if they didn't freeze the ADM.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any other board questions for Bridget this evening? Okay. We will continue the discussions into the evening. We do have our student reps with us.
I apologize.
Go for it. We have time.
What's ADM?
ADM is Average Daily Membership. So, it's the resident pupil count of students in our schools attending the first 20 days.
Okay, thank you.
And Curtis, if you are here and can help me out, I am not able somehow, as co-host, to promote the 802 number ending in 043, which is Teresa, over to panelists. So, Curtis, if you can help me with that, that would be great. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to look at faces as well as the little blue hands. Anyone else with questions for Bridget before we move on? So, let's go over to Carlton and Charlotte. Thank you both for being with us yet again this evening, and we're eager to hear what you have to report from Harwood.
Yeah, of course. Can everybody hear me?
Where'd it go? Carlton?
I'm here. Sorry, my watch is really slow. Anyway, so in the past weeks, we did a survey of the whole school, just asking people about general COVID stuff and how students are feeling. So, we're going to share that information with you. So, first off, we surveyed questions on which kids, on which days they thought were the most physically draining. And 55% of them said that Zoom days were the most draining for them. 25% said in-person, and final 20% said Zoom days.
We also asked which days students preferred. The overwhelming answer was in-person days at 65%, and then 25% said async, and 10% said Zoom days. Lots of kids said that they preferred the in-school days because of the one-on-one instruction they can get from teachers, and that they were able to talk and work with peers face-to-face. Some students did prefer, that did prefer the async days, so that they liked being able to do their work on their own schedule, and that they could go outside and enjoy the weather right now. And I definitely agree with that. And they wanted to do their homework when they could get worked with them.
Carlton?
Yeah, and Tari, going back to the question you asked last meeting about the social effects on students, most of them said that they were definitely disappointed that they didn't get to see their friends as much. And students were pretty much split 50-50, saying classes were normal, aside from masks, versus not normal. Personally, from my experience, I actually think that classes now are pretty normal, and I get to work one-on-one with teachers, and we get to have group work, which feels pretty normal, because I'm kind of used to not having classes with some of my friends. And the majority of students said that, from what they could really feel different, where the biggest difference was, was at lunch. And I thought it was really weird that they have to stay in their seats and not move, and they couldn't choose where they had to sit, like they usually did.
Another question that we asked students is what their overall impression of the year has been. Lots of students said that they enjoyed the fact that they only have two days. So, but that's kind of, that's not my favorite thing, honestly. It's just a nice balance, though, kind of, to have two days at home and then two days of actually in-person, but for some people, it's just trickier. On the other hand, some students said that they felt it was very tiring because of the inconsistency of the week, and that they didn't really have a foundation going on. And it was hard to get into a strict schedule and routine that they follow in there, like last year. Students have also said that their teachers haven't been very good about helping them when they're remote and need some extra instruction. But the overall census from the students is that they feel like they are getting the best education possible, given the circumstance.
Yeah, and finally, we asked students about how the workload was for them on the days that they weren't in school. And 97% of students said that they had enough work to keep them occupied. And 95% of students said that that work was rigorous enough, which is really great to hear.
Just some other things that are going on at Harwood outside of COVID, because that's really not all there is, is clubs are util, okay, I can't say that right now. The clubs are using the new ELO schedule because it is a much better way to meet, since it's really, really, it was really hard at the beginning of the year to figure that out. And then lots of clubs are planning events for this month and the upcoming months, but we're just, with every club, it's kind of hard, especially with COVID, just trying to figure out which plan's actually going to hold up.
Yeah, and screening process getting into Harwood has been getting much faster. We just have a survey that we fill out before school, and then we get to walk right in, and there's a new camera system that automatically takes our temperature as we walk in, which is really, really cool.
Harwood's Assembly Crew put on a virtual assembly the other day where they interviewed all of the new staff and principals. And we all watched it during TA, and it was actually really good.
Yeah, and another cool thing, not really related to Harwood, but kind of related, is that the Mad Dash was actually on the Harwood Trails for the first time ever, and it was a virtual race, which was really cool.
Students and teachers, and just kind of everyone, are super excited that sports have started back up. All of the teams have been putting up a fantastic performance over the past couple of weeks, and just making everyone a little bit happier.
Seniors are very happy that Harwood offered an SAT today just for us, so that we could get that done before we apply to college.
As the final leaves are falling, students, personally, me and Carlton, I know for sure, are getting excited that the season is around the corner. Something back.
And finally, students, teachers, and clubs are all working together to clean out Harwood's gardens, which is really cool to see. And do you guys have any questions for us? Yep.
It wouldn't let me unmute there for a minute. So, I have two questions. One is, did the survey for students go out 7 to 12? Was it from 7 to 12, the students that took the survey? And how many students responded to the survey?
I'm not sure if it was 7 to 12. It might have just been the high school, but we got, I think, around 60 responses.
60? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I loved hearing the survey, questions and the results. That was a fun idea. Thanks for sharing that with us.
Yeah, of course.
Well, that's a very thorough update. It's great to hear, and I imagine that you've had a long day if it started with the SATs. So, thank you both. We really appreciate hearing from you and look forward to another report next month. And we're delighted that so many activities are underway, both academic and extracurricular and social. It's fantastic to hear.
Awesome.
Indeed. All right, well, we're going to move on next. Briefly, I wanted to give both the Policy and Finance Committee a chance to answer any board questions. Again, we're not going to do like a full report, because they had, they both had very detailed minutes from their meetings. And we will have updates from them and items to approve in upcoming meetings. But Alex will be joining us shortly. Tari could answer any policy-related questions from their meeting, and Tim from Finance, if there are any at this time. All right, it seems like these written reports are doing the job, and people are doing their homework. So, thank you for reading. And for those of you who are listening along to our meetings, all of those minutes and updates are online at our website. So, we are going to move along now to our public comment period. So, I would invite anyone who is interested in making a public comment to use the raise hand button, or star nine, if you're on a phone. And we will allow up to three minutes for any speaker who would like to address the board this evening. All right, I see Lisa Healy. Lisa, go ahead.
It says I'm unmuted. Am I unmuted?
You can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. I assume that this is a comment about the agenda in general and not what's been discussed so far.
Correct. Any item?
Okay, my concern and question and comment tonight is really about the continued putting off of making a decision about merging or making Harwood Middle School and Crossbrook Middle School equal. I've done some research. I come at this admittedly from the perspective of being a recovering lawyer. And it seems pretty clear to me, based on the Brigham Decision and the law in Vermont, that students have to be afforded an equal opportunity for education. And looking at the specifics of the curriculum for 7th and 8th graders at Crossbrook and at Harwood, they're not equal. And I was pretty surprised when I looked at this, to talk about this tonight. I started doing this research almost three years ago. So, this discussion has been on for a long time, and it seems like every time it's brought up, one of the comments is that this is rash, and we can't rush it. It doesn't seem rushed anymore. This has been looked at. And I think, if anything, frankly, the pandemic has made it more important for the board to take up this topic and to make a decision to end the uncertainty and the emotional challenges. My 6th graders were both in tears this week, which they don't do often, about which friends are going to choose Crossbrook and which friends are going to choose Harwood, and how to make the decision. And my son Ryan said, "I wish I didn't have to make the decision." And I couldn't agree more. So, my request is really that the board take into consideration the fact that, in looking at the specifics, which I can send to you and not take up everyone's time with, Crossbrook 7th and 8th graders get about three weeks more of instruction in basic subject areas, like math, science, language arts, and social studies. It totals an additional 646 minutes a year. And that doesn't include things like the fact that Crossbrook has a ski and ride program, and Harwood doesn't. That Crossbrook has general music, and Harwood doesn't. That Crossbrook has sustainability. And I think all of these things have been proven to be popular with families based on the voting by feet and the fact that there were so many families that applied last year that choice was frozen. So, my concern is that this is a legal issue with regard to an unequal opportunity for education, based on, as the law puts it, the capriciousness of where the child lives. And the Brigham Decision says that the board has a very heavy burden of justification.
Almost at time, Lisa.
Okay, to show that there's a legitimate operational need. And it doesn't seem like that's been met, especially since my understanding is that it would save money to merge the schools. So, I would just ask that the board not continue to push this forward and not to use COVID as an excuse to do so.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Okay, thank you all. We will move on now to our next agenda item, which is to approve tonight's agenda. So, I would ask that, Tari, if you could put up the spreadsheet. Are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Or are we ready to approve? I think then the way I will ask it is, are there any objections to approving tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will consider the agenda approved. Thank you all. Okay, now I will go to our action items. So, our first action item tonight is the pre-K to 12 planning. And I'm going to give a little overview based on the leadership report and what Tari and I put out in your packet this week. As you saw in our leadership report, we see particular urgency to address the pre-K to 12 long-term plans because of the implications for the Harwood campus. If we continue to keep the pre-K to 12 plan in the parking lot, we fail to address the very pressing needs of that building. As we all know, without a 7th and 8th grade decision, we cannot move forward with long-awaited and much-needed bond planning for renovating Harwood. So, in this week's report, we tried to identify an approach that would enable the board to resolve several longstanding questions about configuration and allow us to continue making progress in long-term governance and stewardship of our district, even in this upside-down time of COVID. In terms of tonight, I am hoping that we may not require extensive deliberation. If board members are interested in pursuing the direction Tari and I have proposed, I would ask for a motion. Then we would have a brief comment period to address any clarifying questions and allow board members the chance to share anything that they would like to go on the public record as saying. Given the length of our previous discussion, I'm hopeful we can answer this first question, up or down. Should the board take up the matter of pre-K to 12 configuration policies during COVID, but delay implementation of any changes until school year 2022, '23 or later? This would allow us to then consider our next steps once that question is answered. So, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Caitlin.
Okay. So, the motion would be, should the board take up the matter of the pre-K to 12 configuration policies during COVID, but delay implementation of any changes until school year 2022, '23 or later? Is there a second? I see a second from Tari. Okay. So, again, I think I'm going to limit this first discussion to about 10 minutes. I know we didn't discuss this particular question in detail, but touched on a number of related topics at length last meeting. And again, whether the answer to this question from the board is a yes or a no, that will really inform the next steps even for tonight. First, I would ask, are there any clarifying questions folks have about this, about this motion? Christine?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused about how this came out of last week's discussion, especially after there had been some interest, or the question was, would we at least wait to see what budgeting looks this year? Knowing that our equalized pupils are likely to, best-case scenario, be flat and go down? We could be finding, in all likelihood, we're going to be finding ourselves in a situation where taxes are going to be going up. And so, I just, I'm concerned, one, that we're putting ourselves in a situation where we have the opportunity to fix that or address that, number one. And number two, I guess, the two of you brought up this spirit of compromise, but I did ask last week, or our last meeting, what would people need to go to? What information do people need to get to yes? What do they need to have happen to get to yes? And there was no answer to that. So, I'm kind of wondering why we continue to compromise with people that don't want to get to yes. And I also feel like this is walking back some of the agreements we made around the extension of the superintendent's contract. I believe the board statement that we put out said that implementation was going to start in '21, '22, and we wanted this superintendent to be doing that before she moved on. So, I feel that violates that agreement. So, I'm just kind of wondering how you guys came, out of all those discussions we had, how we found ourselves here? So, if you two could answer that, that would be great.
Absolutely. That's fair. I think coming out of the last meeting, where we had a pretty split five, six vote, basically, of whether or not to take up this work this year. While, yes, we can move forward.
It wasn't weighted, though, was it?
No, it wasn't weighted. And again, I can be persuaded differently, and obviously, folks could vote this motion down tonight for a number of reasons, some of which you've expressed. I think the challenge that concerns me is that if we continue to have a narrowly split vote at the board level, ultimately, we need to convince our public to support this as well. And that if we continue down that path with a significant percentage of our board not behind it, that we risk sabotaging our efforts. And so, that was where we thought about, would there be a path forward that would allow us to make some decisions with implementation dates that were further down the road and still allow us to do the work at Harwood? So, it's a proposal, and in a very tricky situation. And we heard a lot of comments last meeting about pros and cons, and hesitation, and COVID factors and non-COVID factors. So, other questions?
Michael? Can you hear me fine? Unfortunately, I'm in the car at the moment.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, so I believe the question we had at our last meeting was whether to discuss this or not, right? And so, the split vote was whether to discuss it, period, or not. And as mentioned, how do we get to yes? So, you know, I think delaying compromising when we're talking about discussing or not discussing it, period. I'm a little, I'm confused how this is being halfway through, so that's it, really.
As a point of order, at the last meeting, we really took more of a straw poll, like just trying to get a pulse of the group. And it was, there was no kind of binding motion. There was, there was not even a motion on the table at that time. So, I don't want to give the impression that a more formal decision was made. And that's why, for example, we didn't wait votes. We just were trying to get a sense of what, where was the direction headed? And did we have some kind of consensus yet? And no, there was definitely no consensus yet.
But you moved it to a decision.
I couldn't understand either.
Okay, I'm going to go to Jonathan and then to Tim.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the question of the information that we might need, I mean, I do feel like we had a committee in the late spring and early summer, in which we came up with some information that I felt was a reasonable, in a reasonable year, although there was a little bit of a lift there, would be a reasonable set of questions to ask. would be a reasonable set of questions to ask. And so, so I think that this con of the needing to make decisions using information already collected and the administration, administrative workload and the answer that I got from Bridget last week is, is a consideration and a concern of mine. I'm also really stuck with a point that Kelly made at the last meeting about the the uncertainty regarding construction, because I, to me, I think the answer is different if we're talking about permanently having people in temporary structures or indefinitely having people in temporary structures versus a much higher likelihood of construction. So those are two thoughts that I have on this.
Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I see it a little differently here. I mean, this is a little bit of a failsafe. I think, you know, we're talking about this, we need to talk about the configuration, the future of our, of our district. And in doing so, what if we, what if we don't have universal access to our schools next year? So we're giving ourselves that buffer year, but I do stand behind, you know, we were talking about budget. So I also agree that in budgeting season, we may have to, you know, take some drastic measures. So I don't know if we know what those, you know, what that looks like yet. But again, I think we wanted to distance reconfiguration of the school with budget. So I think it's important that we talk about the future of our universe here, but also leave, I don't think this precludes us from taking measures that we need to for budget consideration. So design is design, I think, for me, and I think we do have some consensus around that, that we stay off the third rail of budget while we're trying to talk about this. And also, we're going to be having the discussion of budget and what we need to do to stay liquid, so to speak, over the next year as things evolve. So. That's my.
Thanks, Tim. Jeremy?
Yeah, I read this motion. My concern is that it, it boxes us into one, one track. And I'm, I think it's important we continue to have this discussion, but I'm not, can't support a motion that boxes us in. I think if we vote for this motion minus the but and then on, we can always say that as part of the conversation. But if we vote yes to this, I think we really limit ourselves and our options, and I won't support that tonight.
What I would encourage us to do then now is to take a vote on this motion. And then if there is a, another to consider, at least I do see you first, and then.
Make a motion to amend?
You may. Let me go to Lisa first, and then I'll come back to Christine. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm curious about, I guess I, I still can't wrap my head around when we would be going for a bond. If we're talking, no matter what year we're talking about, doing the middle school merger, which is the first step of reconfigurations, I understand it, when we would be going for a bond? Because I can't, I honestly just can't support merging the middle schools without knowing that our taxpayers are proving the money to permanently merge our middle schools, because we don't have the building space to do it. So, so given this timeline or any other timeline, when would be, when would be, be developing this bond and putting that up to voters?
I think if this was something that we wanted to pursue, we would then have a group of board members, again, come up with a new timeline to get us there. And, you know, some may feel like you do, Lisa, that they wouldn't feel comfortable going for that bond. And others may feel like we have to ask our voters when money is cheap and see where, where we can get with, you know, we've always discussed what level of detail we need to provide for our voters to be comfortable supporting a bond. But I hear you. I mean, I'm not trying to persuade you. A bond really could be asked for at any time. I think you're correct that we want to do it at a strategic time where we have sufficient information.
As a point of order, I think we're, we're having the conversation right now. And I think that we're, we have a motion in front of us that says, should we have this conversation? And in some ways, we're actually having the conversation. So I, I think it would probably just be good to either hear Christine's amendment or just vote on this motion at this point.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, Christine, go ahead with your amendment.
Thank you. I move that we strike but delay implementation of any changes until school year 22, 23, or later. Just because if we're going to send.
That's fine.
Second.
I think, I think I got it. So second, you have a second. Any, Christine, you want to speak to your motion?
I just want to say, because if we're going to send people off to do a timeline, we might as well let them, we already had a timeline that, again, we agreed to. And we said we'd set it aside a bit because of the situation with COVID. But if we're going to go off and create another timeline, why don't we just leave ourselves the leeway to create a timeline that makes sense rather than hem ourselves in? And I, and I find 22, 23 objectionable. I'll put that out there.
Sure. Okay, is anyone who would like to speak before we vote on the amendment? Okay, let's go to vote this. The amendment is to strike the clause but to delay, delay implementation of any changes until school year 2022, 23, or later. I'll go to Alec. I'm not sure if he's still with us. Actually, I know he was meaning to leave early. So Alex.
Yes to the amendment.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Kelly?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Rosemary is absent. Teresa? Okay, I'm not hearing Teresa. Tim?
No.
Tari?
No.
Teresa, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, that, I'm going to let that carry, and the amendment will fail. So we're back to the motion on the table, which is, should the board take up the matter of pre-K to 12 configuration policies during COVID but delay implementation of any changes until school year 2022 or later? I think we're ready to vote on that question. So let's go to Alex.
I'm, I'm just confused if we vote on this, no on this, does this mean we're not taking it up at all? Or does this mean we're not?
We could, we could, we could take up another motion on the topic this evening.
Okay, so I'm going to vote no on this.
Point of clarification, though, Caitlin. Doesn't by the nature of the struck-down amendment mean that we've effectively already voted to not take up the board this year?
No. No. Yeah. All right, so Alex is a no. Christine?
I'm a no.
Jeremy?
No.
Jonathan?
I'll say yes.
Kelly?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
No.
Tim? Sorry, I heard, I heard yes from Tim.
Talking to myself.
It's all right. Tari?
Yes, from me as well.
Okay, and so that will fail. All right, so what I would say is, first of all, we would, there's a few things I've been thinking about on this. We may want to consider the focus on the bond if the high school is a high priority. But if that's the case, I would be curious to hear from board members how we would propose to resolve these open questions so we could move forward for the bond. If there is a, another motion that someone would like to propose tonight on the warranted topic of the pre-K to 12 planning, we could hear that motion now. Teresa, do you have a motion?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to decouple the conversation of the high school maintenance needs with the K through 12 plan.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion on that motion? Michael, do you want to speak?
May I just confirm that I've got a good motion, the accurately reflected motion, Teresa? So it says to decouple conversation, I guess, about high school maintenance needs from the pre-K to 12 configuration plan? Is that what you'd like to see up there?
I think that works. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Michael, did you want to speak to that motion?
I'll defer at the moment for the.
Okay. Christine?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm experiencing deja vu. Sorry. I seem to remember that in March of 2019, we had a unanimous motion that the bond and pre-K to 12 planning couldn't be decoupled. So I guess I'm, I'm just wondering what's changed in that time. Although I guess we have said we will merge the middle schoolers at Cross at Brook. So is, I guess, could Teresa clarify, does that mean that we're moving with the bond, moving forward with the bond planning with the understanding that all seventh and eighth graders are across a brook? Or is that still in her mind up in the air? That would help me be able to speak, to vote to this one. Thanks.
Teresa, I'll let you answer that one brief, very quickly, and then I'm on to Alex.
Well, I mean, I think Michael deferred to me, so I think, so that I could explain why I wrote, said the motion. So I would imagine he goes next. My point of view on this is that COVID happened, Christine, honestly. And while I agree that there is a, it would be in an ideal state, we couple everything with a bond. I don't think we're going to get a bond. And I don't think we can hold the hot school hostage any longer. And, you know, there are some basic maintenance things that I keep hearing over and over that absolutely need to be done. And I don't think we're going to make a decision or get a bond. And I think it's just the right thing to do to decouple the conversation so that during budget, we can really figure out what, what the most highest priority maintenance is for the high school and budget towards that rather than saying, okay, well, we're not going to budget towards that because we're, we're planning on getting a bond as part of the pre-K through 12 plan. You know, I agreed with it before, and yes, it was unanimous before, but I don't think we're getting a bond in this, in this environment or anytime soon. So I think it's the right thing to do to decouple it.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry. I, I don't think you can have a motion that says what you can and can't talk about. That's not, that's not, I, I don't understand how that's an action item. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote for a bond that says, a motion that says, I, I can only talk about one thing. That's just, that, it doesn't even make sense. I don't understand the point of the, of the motion.
Can I respond to that, Caitlin?
You know, I'm, I'm going to ask, we, we got ourselves caught last time in too much of a back and forth. And so I think if anyone else wants to speak to this, I'm trying to keep us to one person for each motion at least. Is there anyone else who needs a question? Oh, I see, Tari, go ahead.
I do feel that we have repeatedly concluded upon closer examination of scoping work needed in the Harwood building, that we cannot make intentional decisions unless we know where the seventh and eighth graders are going to reside on an ongoing basis. And we have, I think, at least three times gone down this road. We've not concluded, we've never made a final decision that it, it would happen for them to leave. But we have been pretty clear that we need to decide where they're going to be before we can move forward with a bond. So I don't see how we can decouple these conversations.
Kelly? Sorry. So I don't even know if this fits into this area or not. But is there a way that, I mean, do we need a bond? And are we able to use the maintenance reserve fund to help pay for the maintenance at Harwood or?
The, I'll address it as, as briefly as I can right now. I mean, we have a few million dollars in maintenance reserve, and we were looking at at least maintenance, like the deferred maintenance costs being in the $20 million range. So could we address some needs through our maintenance reserve and through budgeting, certainly? But in terms of even the basic, you know, safety and, I think we called it level one or phase one, it was quite a bit larger than what we have on hand. Michael?
Yeah. I, I just take this as another tactic to delay no matter what, as we saw from the last vote.
Point of order, that's offensive. Point of order, that's offensive, Michael.
We hear it. So, Michael, go ahead for anything you want to speak to in terms of the motion.
The, with this, we can't, it can't be decoupled. It's like, build me a building. How many people? I don't know. Right? That's sort of where we're at here. And if we're talking about it for finances with this, along this, because decoupling or not, we've shown before that expenses, including bonding for middle school, is cash flow positive, cash flow savings day one. So, yeah, I, it, there's no way to decouple this, and we're going in circles.
Okay, I'm going to ask us to vote. So the motion on the table is to decouple conversation about high school maintenance needs from the pre-K to 12 configuration plan. Alex?
No.
Christine?
No.
Jeremy?
No.
Jonathan?
I'm saying no.
Kelly?
I'm abstaining.
Jonathan, I'm sorry. Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
I'm abstaining.
Michael?
No.
Teresa?
Yes.
Tim? I heard no. Tari?
No.
Okay, so that motion will fail. Do I have another motion on the topic for this evening? I see hands from Kelly and from Michael and from Christine. Kelly, do you have a motion?
Sorry.
Okay, Christine?
I move that we move forward with the implementation of middle school consolidation in FY 22, 23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments on the motion? Christine, do you want to speak to that first?
Sure. I, you know, I was just thinking this would effectively do what Teresa was saying. Because if we can agree to this now, then we could move forward with the Harwood bond discussion without talking about the middle school anymore.
Any other discussion before we vote? Tari?
This implies that we've already made a decision confirming that we would indeed merge, consolidate the middle schools, and I don't believe we've made that decision. We've certainly talked about it. We've articulated a direction that we're wanting to explore further. But I don't feel like that's the last decision on the, made by the board was to consolidate them.
Jonathan?
It's an interesting motion because it does get us past some of the uncertainty of COVID, hopefully. And, and hopefully gives us the time to, to figure out the construction piece. But, yeah, I guess I just don't, one thing I don't know is, is, is if. But, yeah, I guess I just don't, one thing I don't know is if under this motion, if we accept that and then we put together a bond that fails over the course of next year or something. Or, you know, COVID impacts, I guess I don't know how much this hems us in either. I mean, I guess we can always reverse course on this. But I guess I think it seems reasonable, but I just, it could be a good approach, and we really do need to start figuring out what the high school is going to look like and start, yeah, I think we're going to need to try to force through a bond or push through a bond or figure out some way to get a bond going in the next couple of years. So, all right, that's it.
Yeah, thanks, Jonathan. Lisa?
Um, yeah, I, so I still want to hear from the middle school administrators. I think we asked for some data that understandably couldn't give us right now. That doesn't mean that I don't want to hear it when they're able to give it to us. So if they're really that strapped, then we're going to have to wait to hear from them till when they can do it. I also, like, same point, I, until we get the money from our taxpayers in the form, like, I can understand trying to put a plan out with a bond, then, and the plan is contingent on the bond passing. But I'm not willing to go forward with a plan if we end up in a situation where the bond is failing because we, I don't, I'm not comfortable putting students in a school that don't fit them and then holding them basically hostage in community decides to pass a bond. So that's where I'm standing.
Thanks, Lisa. Jeremy?
I would just sort of re-enter in this conversation. I think there's, for one, there's certainly benefit to our taxpayers with moving this conversation forward. And two, I do remember that, when the teachers came out and spoke pretty strongly to the board last spring, I guess it was, last winter, they were not in favor of the process, but they were in favor of this move. And so I think that we actually, the board would move to support a lot of the folks that we work for or work for us, or however the relationship is that you want to put it. I also just would ask the question, or enter the question, even if it doesn't need an answer now. Just do, do we need the additions, the annexes, if we're not moving five, six, if we remove that from the equation?
I do think you're right, Jeremy. That is an open question about the fit at Cross at Brook. And it's something that we would need more information. This timeline would potentially get us there. Teresa?
I agree with Tari. I think this implies that we've made the decision. And it does, I also agree with Lisa about, you know, and I think Jonathan said it too, about attaching with a bond. I mean, I think we heard pretty clearly that, sure, our administration might have been in favor of it, but the bond was an important part of that. And I believe it was Tom Drake, like, after the budget failed, that stood up in open time slot, open discussion and said, you know, don't do that without a bond to do it. So I struggle with that. I also, I'm really struggling with this idea that we're not going to have our seventh through 12th graders together probably for most of the year. And we're talking about consolidation and making class sizes bigger, even if it's just a little bit bigger. And so I just, I think there's just too many knowns overall. And I also, I know you all know that I think this, but I'm telling you the truth. The tax savings is a false narrative. Even if we save five, even if we save a million dollars, it's five cents, it's a common number. Five cents on a $300,000 house, if you make $136,000 or more, is about $150 in savings, which is basically a Netflix account. This is not, you know, the narrative that it's going to save our taxpayers tons and tons of money. Consolidation isn't how we do it. Contrast that with if we can keep the 50 students that we just got and we can get the 30 students that went to homeschool this year back, that's 80, that's $1.6 million without actually having to lift a finger. If we focus on student outcomes, we can do that. It won't be divisive. We can really focus on making our schools better and being unifying. I think something like this, this discussion is just going to continue to suck the oxygen and out of everything that we do over the course of the next year, or at least through town meeting day. And I'm very concerned about that.
I'm going to go to Alex and then Michael and then Kelly. I don't think I've heard from any of you under this motion.
I don't think we should be deciding how much money matters to who. I mean, none of us know $150 can be a lot for somebody. So I don't think we should be deciding what's important and not for other people regarding money. I also, I don't understand why we're having this conversation. I feel like, I feel like we, either we're going to go forward and have a conversation about this or we're not. But I don't understand why we're getting into debates about whether we need a bond or not, how much money things are going to cost, whether we're saving money or not. Because we do this every fall, pretty much without fail. And then again in the winter, and then again in the spring. And we have the same discussion, and we get nowhere. So I don't think having this discussion makes any sense at this point in time because we're just continuing to go around and around on this thing when we've, you know, we clearly are not making any moves forward on it. So I don't really understand why we're doing this.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to go to Michael and then Kelly, and then I'm going to ask for the vote.
All right. To be clear with this, like, we're talking about middle school consolidation here. If we're talking about bond and moving things forward, we can separate the middle school from the high school by dealing with the middle school first. As the, we have all these numbers already. We have the ideas of how much it would be to build the wing. We have the numbers of how much, what the class sizes would be. You build a wing, and we have the savings numbers. So you do it, it becomes net savings day one. We unify the middle school. It's unified. And, yeah, so we can do it. I think we need the full board, though, for these discussions. But, yep.
Thanks. Kelly?
I also just want to echo that I don't think that we can take into consideration what the teachers were all saying back in the winter because they are all in a different place right now. So I get that they're all on board, but not at that moment and not how the process was panning out. But I think that it's important to make sure that we're hearing from them and hearing from the admin team. I guess I remember back to the meeting last month, or last meeting, and hearing that they are, they're pretty absorbed in COVID right now. So I think having this put on their plate as well is just one more, is the breaking point. So.
I do think the, yeah, thank you, Kelly. All right, I'm going to ask for a vote, then the motion is that we move forward.
I just have a question, actually, if that's okay. If the implication of this, of a yes vote for this would be having made a policy decision to consolidate the middle schools, that's very different than the topic that we warned. And it feels to me like, if that, if I'm understanding what the implication of the decision is, that we should delay it until the next meeting and have time for public feedback. Because all that was on the agenda was to have a conversation over some future period about it. It wasn't to make a policy decision. But maybe I'm misunderstanding the implications of this motion.
I think anytime we move forward with implementation, we still have to come through with a timeline. And we, I would, I would see this as legitimate under our pre-K to 12 planning. So that is why I allowed the motion.
Is the implication, if it's a yes vote, that we will have made a policy decision to merge the middle schools? Is that how the group is reading this?
All right, let's get some clarification there then. Christine, go ahead.
Well, I'm just confused because people keep saying that we haven't made a decision to merge the middle schools. But I thought that decision that we made back in November was that we were going to do that. So, I mean, it's like we can't even get agreement on what we voted on. So, you know, I, but, but again, I mean, we keep going back on decisions. And so that's problematic. It seems like nothing, nothing takes. But I don't, you know, to Tari's point, I don't see how this is any more of a policy decision. It's a similar policy decision to what you had warned on the agenda. So. I mean, I think that would have to happen next year, not the year after.
I think, again, what we're, from my understanding, is we're talking about now we will move into development of a timeline for middle school consolidation and to make a series of decisions related to that in the months ahead that would then allow our staff and administrative team to move toward implementation. So I'm going to, I'm going to actually ask us to vote on this. If people are still confused and feel like they need to abstain or vote no, then you can do so. But I'm comfortable with the motion on the table, given that this is something that we have addressed extensively, including at some recent meetings. So the motion is that we move forward with the implementation of middle school consolidation in FY 2223. Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
No.
Tim?
No.
Tari?
Abstaining.
I'm going to vote yes on this. And I think that what we will need to do is, as this will carry, what I would like to hear next is what would be some of the steps that we would need to consider in terms of moving forward with implementation that would allow us that time before fall 2022. So we're at 7:03 right now. We could, one of the things that we were expecting to come out of this meeting as a potential would be to form a committee for some kind of timeline, and that's still a possibility. If there are other suggestions for how we can move forward with a decision, a series of decisions, I would be open to hearing that now.
Clarification, Caitlin?
Yep.
Does this mean we've just agreed to consolidate the middle schools without a bond?
I would say we've agreed that that's our goal. That, well, I shouldn't say with or without a bond, that merging the middle schools for FY 2223 is our goal, and we continue to move toward that. Again, we're, we can get caught in the semantics, but I do think it's helpful to use that language here because the idea is that, for me, and why I would vote for this right now, is that we want to be able to show our public and our employees that we are, we continue to move toward that goal, even though that's not something that we see possible for next fall. There was a time where we thought it was possible for this fall, and that didn't happen for a number of reasons. And there was a time we thought it was possible for fall 2021. And we decided that that's still not possible for a number of reasons. And so now we're looking further ahead. And one of the things I heard a lot last year was that we needed more time for planning. And so if we're starting now to start to think about what would it take to get to implementation, we're giving ourselves and our team and our community a lot more time to get there. And if that, in that implementation, means getting a bond before our voters sooner, that's for our board to consider. I don't think anything precludes us from that. Lisa?
The two things that I just made note of is, is to hear from the teachers and the administration again, given the new circumstances and the new timeline. Specifically, the administrators, I'd really like to invite Dwayne and Tom to a meeting and be able to do a little Q and A with them and hear, hear their thoughts kind of unfiltered. And that, I think, will really help us in the planning process. And then, yeah, getting them ready to try to pass. Because, again, I'm not comfortable moving students before we have an approved bond into a school that can't fit them. So if we're really going to do it, then I think we need to get the voters to say they want to put the money into doing it.
Thanks. Christine?
Yeah, I just, I think we've talked about the fact that the number of students would fit in Cross at Brook as is. The school was built for 400 students. And I think we're, we're talking about, about having about 400 students there. And it might be a little bit north or south of that 400. And I know it's different than what was originally planned for in terms of the split between seven, eight, and five, six. But it's still a school that was built for 400 students. And I think also what this allows us to do is now we can move forward with the Harwood bond, knowing that the seventh and eighth graders aren't going to be there. And if we can get back on our old timeline with building, yeah, it might mean that that we have portable classrooms at Cross at Brook for a year or two. But you're looking at having portable classrooms for a year or two when their construction happening at Harwood, whether those classrooms are at Harwood or whether they're at Cross at Brook. But having them at Cross at Brook will allow us to get some savings on our budget and essentially align the curriculum. I mean, I'm happy to, if people don't want to move forward with the merger, I'm happy to introduce a motion saying, let's align the curriculum five through eight. But I'm guessing how, I can guess how that motion will go. So.
I'm going to go to Jonathan and Tari, and then I have a suggestion.
Yeah, I think, I mean, looking at this vote in a positive light, maybe this could be the thing that helps us to actually push forward with the bond and get that in front of the voters because we, you really do need this specification before we figure out what kind of construction we need, before we put, get the bond out in front of the voters. But I do, you know, in my opinion, I, you know, I really don't support the move without the bond. So my, my support for this consolidation is contingent on there being adequate funding in order to both do the desperately needed maintenance at Harwood, but then also to make sure that, that we're not, that we're talking about the adequate amount of space. We're going to have larger classes under this consolidation. But I don't, I don't want sort of an indefinite period of temporary housing and like, you know, multi-use with cafeteria used for lunch and band at the same time and some kind of things that we had talked about previously.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Tari?
So I feel like maybe, overall, we should kind of, this would be a good conversation to move to next meeting. I still feel confused about the implications of our vote. But also, I am hearing comments stated as fact when I've seen more recent data that would indicate something different. So having us dig into, you know, whether the kids fit without changes, et cetera, I don't think this is the time or moment to do that, especially when we all have different kinds, different amounts of information and stuff. So I guess I want to urge us to not start, like, problem solving at all or assuming that we know where we'll end up. I do hear us identifying concerns and questions that we have. And that seems like a really useful conversation to have. But I think we could, at this point, if we've sort of said, we've made a decision, but we're not going to finish implementing it for a year and a half now, we could wait till next meeting to figure out, like, maybe have this conversation about what are our concerns? What are the next steps? I kind of feel like I'm still reeling from this, and I, my brain isn't working as well as I would, I was, I would like it to. And I would think that maybe other people feel that way, too.
Okay, so I do see, Kelly, I think we can certainly bring this, we'll be on the agenda next meeting. I'm trying to decide whether it was worth asking a small committee of board members to meet before then to come up with some potential timelines. potential timelines.
No, one thing, I was just gonna reflect, when we had our committee last time, we really used the conversation that the whole board had had to guide all our decision-making, and I think we haven't really had, I don't feel like we've had that around this topic, so to start a committee now feels like a different process than we've been trying to use.
Okay. Kelly, and then Kristen?
I'm wondering if there can be some clarification. I guess I'm feeling like, I, I am feeling confused about what just passed, so is it, are we looking at just the 7th and 8th graders from Harwood being moved to Cross at? Are we looking at the 5, 6 from Moreton as well being moved to Cross at? Like, it seemed like it's very so ambiguous, or is that the topic of conversation to be having with this smaller committee? So I'm wondering if there's, if we have that clarification for listeners as well as for ourselves, and I'm just going on assumptions, but that's.
I would, I would feel better leaving this meeting if perhaps we could even take another vote with language that, you know, if, if I keep hearing that people are confused, we could take a vote on language that is more specific, if that would be helpful. So if anyone has a motion that they think would be more helpful in terms of defining this, because I certainly don't want our board leaving not sure of what we're doing and trying to communicate to that, to that to our public. Christine?
Just for clarification, and I thought about this when we were having discussion, I did just mean 7th and 8th because it was the Harwood concern with the Harwood bond, so I, it, it did not include the 5, 6 from Moretown. But I know that's in my mind, and that wasn't clear in the motion, so I, can we clarify something that was previously adopted, just to say this applies to 7, 8?
So, we could add, we could vote on another motion that says that we move forward with the implementation of middle school consolidation in FY 2223 for 7th and 8th graders at Cross at Brook Middle School. That would be one possibility, if that adds that clarification.
I think you could amend something previously adopted, and so.
I think you are correct.
As an amendment to the previous motion.
So it would still be a motion on the table to amend the previous, previously adopted motion. You are correct. Is there a second for that? Or was it, I should say, was that made? Because I, I gave some suggested language, so first of all, is that, and Tari, go ahead.
Well, I was wondering if somebody who was in the majority might be able to clarify the implication of, like, I can't tell if it's still up in the air or not, the decision. It's about merging them. So is there a way to clarify that, those of you who were in the majority, to be more explicit, or do I just have to deal with the, what I, what for me is ambiguous? If it's ambiguous for me, it might be for the public, too.
Wouldn't the amendment act as that clarification?
That, my question wasn't 7th and 8th grade, it's what did we just decide?
I think that what I see here is, and again, it is vague, moving forward with implementation is different than saying all 7th and 8th graders will attend Cross at Brook Middle School next date. I do think that is somewhat implied, but I think from what I'm hearing from all of us is that there's still a lot of steps to get there. We're setting out that goal again, just like last November, we set out a goal of a pre-K to 12 plan, and we still have some work at, as a board, and then there'll be a lot of implementation work that really rests with the staff to get there. And along that way, there's that question of when a bond would happen, and along the way, there's other potential deal breakers. I mean, I don't want emphasize those necessarily, but I also don't want to deny that something else could come up that could potentially derail this, but this is a way of saying this is still our intention. And I think in terms of being now in COVID and helping our voters understand that we can't make some of the major changes that we had expected to make in the very near term, we still intend to make some of them in the slightly further term. And then to the point of the bond, that may help us inform our voters about what we are asking for and what kind of, especially if we want to do a bond before some of the implementation, helping, anyways, I'm, I'm saying too much, but helping to define the path that this district is on. All right, I'm gonna go to, so first of all, I think I had a motion, I want to make sure I have a second. So Christine, did you amend the previously adopted motion?
Yes, I will amend, but just to clarify, in FY 2223, 7th and 8th graders would be at Cross at Brook. If it's implemented, they're there.
Got it.
Can I, um, can I ask?
Hold on, I need, I need a second.
How do we handle, how do we handle bond, though? Like, I, I'm just, I'm confused. I'm still, I still need more clarification on this, quite frankly.
I'll say.
I'm willing to vote, yeah.
So Jeremy, I did hear a second. Here's what I would suggest, is that we vote this one up or down, and then if we want to have a separate motion with some language around a bond, we could have that tonight, and we can also, we have a few more minutes this evening, but we could also.
Can I make an amendment? Caitlin?
To this motion, yes, you can amend.
Yes. With the intent to add the intent of implementation of middle school, because that gives us the ability to move forward, plan, but if we decide we absolutely need a bond, it gives us the opportunity to have the bond discussion and all that other kind of stuff. Otherwise, we have to go back. If we decide we need a bond, we can't do it without a bond, then we have to pull the whole motion, right? And so it just, if we add the words with the intent of implementing, implementing this, it gives us some outs.
Okay, so I hear the amendment.
We're gonna, Caitlin, just quickly, because what she, her amendment changes the original motion, and that's the same thing as rescinding the motion, and you can only do that when you've voted, she's not changing her vote. She's trying to change the motion, is what she's doing, and she was on the losing side, and she can't do that when you're on the losing side.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Christine, I'm trying to get the yes on this, actually, believe it or not, so, okay.
Okay. Here's what I'm gonna suggest, is that we vote the original motion on the table up or down, and then we, it's a lot easier, I find, if we then introduce another motion, if there's something else that we need to add or clarify, we can do so. So I'm gonna ask for a vote now on this motion on the table that we move forward with the implementation of middle school consolidation in FY 2223 for 7th and 8th graders at Cross at Brook Middle School.
I have a, a point of clarification.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
This is actually an amend, it's not, it's an amendment to the other motion. So we're actually just voting on this for 7th, the last piece, correct? Because I think that affects my vote.
Okay. All right, I hear you. So we're gonna use that as the amendment of the previously passed motion. So I think, yes, the, the difference here is that if this amendment had, well, whether it passes or fails, we don't have to then go back and revote the motion on the table.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
So do I have it correct now, or am I, do I go back to how it was?
No, I think you have it correct, Tari. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
And I don't want to. We have two votes ahead of us, probably. Or if it passes, we'd have another vote after that.
That's, I think, what is different, is because we've already passed the motion on the table, we would not have to revote the full motion. But let's get the amendment taken care of. The amendment is to add the clause for the 7th and 8th graders at Cross at Brook Middle School. So voting on the amendment, Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Can you come back to me, please?
Sure. Kristen?
I'm abstaining.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tari? And Chris, uh, Kelly?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so that will carry. I don't believe we need to now revote, because basically we have amended a motion that had already passed. But if you feel like, Tari, we're, we can either look at this up.
See, Julie, I don't know. I, I would feel better if we just voted it again.
Let's vote it again.
It would feel a little bit more i's and t's.
Great.
Add it and cross it.
I appreciate that. So if now we have the motion is that we move forward with the implementation of middle school consolidation in FY 2223 for 7th and 8th graders at Cross at Brook Middle School. So I'm gonna go to Alex.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Uh, no.
Kelly?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
No.
Tim?
No.
Tari?
Yeah.
And Caitlin, I will vote yes there. All right. So that one will carry. It is 7:20. If we want to consider another motion on the topic this evening, we can do so. Otherwise, this will be on the agenda for next meeting. All right, I think we have gotten to a certain point of clarity. I do hear board members looking for more, and I think that's something that we will pursue next week with the goal, or not next week, the 28th, with the goal of getting to a level of clarity that we could ask a committee, a small group, to meet once, maybe twice, to work on an implementation timeline. And certainly the bond playing a major part in where that would fall. Okay. So we are going to move on to our next topic this evening. The next topic is on negotiations and the hiring of a firm to represent the district in negotiations with our teachers and support staff. I know that that team met about a week ago, and Christine, or Kristen, or Bridget, if you have a recommendation to make in the form of a motion, we could hear that now. I should say, not, Bridget may have some supporting information. Christine or Kristen, do you have a motion for us?
I, I will make the motion that we hire, it's Lynn Lynn Blackman for the purpose of negotiations. And then if Bridget wants to speak to it.
All right, is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Kristen and Christine. Any discussion?
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bridget, if there's anything you want to add here.
I can just share, it should be said that our committee voted unanimously to recommend Lynn Lynn and Blackman to the board, and I was asked to, excuse me, to check in and see if, in fact, the firm would take on your district, and they have agreed. Pietro has agreed.
Right. Right. Is the board ready to vote then? All right, I think we can pull that up, Tari, whenever you're ready, and I will go first to Alex.
Yes.
Okay, and Christine?
Yes.
I may be a little bit out of order, so, let's see. Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Lisa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Teresa?
Abstain.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'm missing. Tari?
I think I need to abstain because I missed the discussion.
Oh, sure, it's fine. So we have Alex, and we had Christine. Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. I think we got everyone. Did I miss anyone's vote? I had abstentions from Tari, Teresa, and Jonathan, and I had a yes from everyone else. Okay, that will pass. Thank you. Next up then is to review our new agenda requests. So we had four requests in the last few, a few carryovers from May and a few brand new ones. And what I would suggest tonight is that we vote these up or down. I'll provide any context that I can. But really, what we're doing here is just deciding whether this goes on a future agenda, so we don't really need to get into the discussion. I believe the first question, the first agenda request left over from May was related to climate survey results. And Tari, whenever you're ready, if you have those. We do know that there were some climate survey results, kind of raw data shared with us. We also know that this was a tool used because it was a requirement from the state, and some of that has since changed. And Tari, if you go to the second tab, I made a tab just for tonight. Thank you. And, oh, so I'm skipping ahead, I wasn't sure which one's first, but we'll get to the other one. So the climate survey results. Having a presentation on those was the proposal. I would share that I, I do fear two things. One, asking the administration to do a pretty extensive amount of work means that this would be quite far off. And two, that the usefulness of these results is, is diminishing. We have always done climate surveys. There were a lot of pros and cons to the tool chosen, but the options for the tool were very, very limited at the time. And I think the topic of school climate could be something that the board might want to take up, but I would suggest that at this point, the climate survey itself is somewhat outdated, especially given the situation we are in with COVID. So that's just kind of an update of where things are at in that respect. The request was regarding climate survey results to have admin team or third party present results of the spring 2019 climate survey.
Caitlin, based on, on time, I'm the one who made the request. I'm happy to rescind the request. Although, although the next climate survey, it'd be great if we actually got it within a, you know, period of time.
Great. Okay, I hear you, Teresa, and I think that there is certainly a lot of interest in seeing that, and certainly in seeing a survey that will be more useful to both our staff and to our, to our board. But we understand that they were under a lot of constraints in what was available. So thanks, Teresa. The other request was around the traits for the next superintendent, and so that also is both, you know, not in the most immediate, but coming up. So engaging with the public and taking time to determine the important traits for superintendent over the next five years. I don't know that we need the part that separate superintendent eval from contract discussion. I'm gonna take that out unless I hear otherwise. But I would say typically that this is something that a search firm would help us to do. I do think this is going to be very important. If the board wants to take some agenda time to do this, my suggestion would be that it happened in the spring, probably around April, when the new board is seated, who would be doing that hiring of the next superintendent? And that likely the first step would actually be the decision about whether to hire a firm and what firm to hire, and then engaging with some steps such as engaging with public and other stakeholders. But again, that's my contextual piece. Teresa, do you want to speak to this one?
It's been a long time, sorry, Caitlin.
No, I just, I saw your hand up, that's why I was concerned.
Oh, no, sorry, hi, that was from before. Oh, no, sorry. That was from before. Probably.
All right. So Christine? I don't hear you.
I'm muted. The trait is kind of, are we going to vote on this? The trait is kind of confusing to me.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I know that we put together a job description way, but like trait could be, you know, blue eyes. So.
Can we call it capabilities?
Here's, here's what I would suggest also, is because we could get too into the weeds here. Tari, if you would add a phrase such as, yeah. You know, right, to discuss engaging with the public and taking time. Great. Okay. Just to make sure that we have the formalities here, do we have, is this the correct motion on the table? And I'll ask Teresa, since this was your request.
If we want to just swap out traits with capabilities, to Christine's point.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. So Jonathan, and then we'll see if we can vote on this one.
Yeah, I just wanted to just talk briefly about this, the sentence that was deleted, which was removing the... Yeah, there you go. That was easily put back. I do think that's important, and I'm not sure it's exactly related to this agenda item, although it might be. But I was wondering what, if that was in the original request, what you're, what you're thinking was for why that was removed.
So the reason I did it was the request came in in May 27, I believe, when we hadn't made that contract decision. And we didn't get to this agenda request on that night, I think it was at the end of May. And so it seemed like that piece was outdated because we have made a contract decision. So that was my only rationale there.
Yeah, I mean, I do think it seems like a reasonable thing to discuss in general. Not specific to, you know, any one year. So I don't know if, Teresa, if you, if you want to withdraw that from the agenda request or keep it in there?
I'm, I think we should remove it for now. But I agree with you, Jonathan. I think that we do the process of the evaluation versus contract discussion should be a separate issue still. And so maybe that's a different agenda request topic on how we do that.
Sounds good. Thanks. So let's take it out then. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And I will just remind folks that we collected responses from everyone this summer about that process, and that will be, you know, captured and passed along for the next evaluation and contract decisions. So thank you. All right, let's vote on this one. If we are going to discuss engaging with the public and taking time to determine the important capabilities for superintendent over the next five years. Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
No, it just seems redundant.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Tari? No. Okay. All right, so that will carry, and we will put that on our work plan. The next one relates to the Black Lives Matter flag. And I think Tari will be able to put up the language from Michael. I'll ask Michael to confirm that that is the request. And then I'll ask for a second, and Michael can speak to this request as well. Again, we're really voting on whether to devote agenda time to the topic.
Yeah, it's a general request. It could be more vague, but that's fine.
I'd be happy to second that.
All right. Any further discussion just before we vote about whether or not to put discussing flying the Black Lives Matter flag on a future agenda?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
To say, when I say discuss the flying BLM flag, Black Lives Matter flag, it, you know, as our discussion, whatever happens, it may turn into something else, but something along that theme, right? It could be a banner or something else, or something like that. I've talked to some members of community about it, and they're interested in bringing this back up.
Great, thanks. Jeremy, and then Tari?
Yeah, I think in some other schools around us, when the flag has been raised, there was pretty significant student input into that conversation. So I would just hope that we could engage our student body. If we're going to put it on the agenda, just that we have, maybe we can enlist our, our student reps with their displayed survey skills to, to get some input from our student body as well on that. So I would just, just have that in the conversation, but I'll certainly vote to, to support this motion tonight.
Yeah, we're happy to put out a survey.
Thanks, Carlton.
Thank you.
So we won't have you do it yet, even if this is passed tonight. That could be a, in a future item, for sure. Let's go to Tari, and then Tim.
I don't want to get in the way of this conversation, so I think I will abstain. But for me, the discomfort comes from my, I feel like last time, it felt that it was in response to a request from part of our community. That was the principles of our buildings, and this time, it feels like it's coming from us. And I'm just not sure if that's our role as to lead that discussion right now. I would certainly be open to having the community request it at a future time.
Tim?
Yeah, I agree with Tari. I don't feel like this is something that we should drive. But, you know, if this were to pass, I also agree with Jeremy, you know, on the on the survey piece, and we did discuss this the last time, is, you know, how are we going to articulate this, you know, at our elementary schools? Where, you know, you know, how do you, you know, how do you survey them? So, you know, that's, it's on their campuses as well, and the level of understanding and gravity and those types of things. You know, certainly not on par with the high schoolers' understanding of the issue.
Thanks. All right, I'm just going to go to Teresa, because she hasn't spoken yet on this, and then I'm going to ask for the vote.
I'm just going to clarify. I'm also going to abstain for same reasons as Tari. Comes organically from the community. I'm all about it. But I will not do it with, I'm not, I don't want to necessarily bring it up from a board perspective.
Thanks. All right, so the agenda request is to discuss flying the Black Lives Matter flag. Alex?
I'll discuss it, yes.
Okay. Christine? Christine, I didn't get you.
I'm sorry, yes.
Great. Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Come back to me, please.
Sure. Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Abstain.
Tim?
No.
Tari? Abstain.
Abstain.
Yep, thanks. Back to Kristen.
Abstained as well.
Okay. So that will carry, and we will put that on future agenda. I think along with that, we could consider both, perhaps before, but likely after an initial board conversation, putting out some specific communication to invite the kind of comments, student survey, input from various constituencies that we may want to hear from. All right, we have one more from Tim this evening. And Tari, you can bring up that agenda request related to budget comparisons. Okay. So Tim, does this capture what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Tim, would you speak to what you're looking for here?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, some more baselining, and I think, you know, we, we look at other school districts for various things. And so, you know, as we, you know, begin to transition and look down the road, you know, we've talked about, you know, superintendent transition and those types of things. So, you know, I'd like to better my own understanding, to be honest with you, of what's in each one of those, you know, line items. At what point? Do you see trends that, you know, there's, there's process improvement signals out there, these types of things? But also, I'll use a kind of a football analogy, where, you know, a team might have a, you know, an offensive system or a playbook installed, you know, in their, you know, for their team, and coaches, you know, come and go, so to speak. But, you know, the playbook remains the same. So I think I just was like to see, you know, how we do against other districts as we get ready to transition to new leadership. And I think Bridget was very transparent about it in her report, in her reflection, that says, you know, obviously, there's, there's got to be continuity. But I feel like if we don't really know what that is as a board, especially now we have a finance committee, you know, as we make this transition, you know, it just keeps us not so much on the perimeter when we're, you know, having that transition of leadership, you know, understand why we spend our money, where, how, those types of things. So anyway, if there's anything else from our brothers and sisters in the state, then we should know.
Okay, let's go to Christine.
I think I'm unmuted. Um, yeah, I mean, for, on the one hand, this sounds to me like running the schools, because we never get into line items. On the other hand, I feel that this is something that business managers probably do all the time when they have their meetings. And then, on yet another hand, I also feel like this is the purpose of an audit. If an audit turned up anything unusual compared to what other school districts are doing, our auditor would let us know that. So I'm not.
Thanks. Alex?
I'm just confused as to who's doing this work and who's paying for this work.
I think I said finance, you know, director, I mean, all of our budgets are...
Hold on. Point of order, isn't it just an agenda request, and that would be discussed on the agenda if we put it on the agenda?
That's correct. We could do that. And so it would be, in terms of the process, if the board wanted to discuss this further exactly, we would have to discuss a timeline, and we would have to discuss who does this work. I'm going to go to Teresa and Jonathan and Bridget. Did you have something?
Yeah, so I totally agree that this is a, a very, you know, this is basically benchmarking against, you know, comparables. If you buy a house, you sell a house, you have a house, you know, you're, you're being comped against others. This is very, very common. And this is not something that is covered in audit. Audit is really looking for, looking for things that are, you know, incorrect, or, you know, don't follow, or maybe seem shady, kind of thing. Whereas this is really about, are we operat, you know, are we operating really efficiently? And are we putting our investments where we want to put our investments in, again, against our vision? So I think this is a very common practice. I do think this is squarely in the board's purview of looking after the taxpayers and how we're spending our money. And I don't think any other role in the district, including the superintendent, has this kind of charter within, you know, even per the VSBA's rules. So I think this is really important. I'm glad Tim brought this up, because I think this is a really important thing that we should be working on and figuring out how we can do this.
Okay. Jonathan?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Teresa made my point about the audit. I don't, I think this is different than an audit, and I do feel like an audit is not going to be looking at comparatively and saying, oh, yeah, on this line item, you know, why, why is it, you know, 300% more expenditures, whereas another school district of similar size had less? You know, just kind of getting some information about that. I do feel like it's in the board's purview. So I'm just should have called on me first, because I would have something to say.
It's okay. I'm going to go to Bridget. One of the things that does occur to me here that could be another option for us to consider and maybe in discussion is that we may need some more board training on, on this topic. I am not aware of other districts that do this, or have done this kind of comparison, and I'm in touch with a lot of board chairs regularly. And so I think that if, if there's interest in better understanding certain levels of our budget, then that may be something that the board wants to pursue and get more understanding and training on. So Bridget, do you want to speak to this?
I do. I think it's great for the board to take this up on a future agenda and have a thorough conversation. I would encourage you to define exactly what you mean it to say. And I would also encourage you, I've never really seen this done in this, in what I think this says. So it should be done by an independent third party. I think the board should consider finding a consultant and hiring a consultant or an independent third party to decide and help you decide which districts you actually want to look at out of all 55. And if you're going to compare line item to line item, and maybe certain categorical examinations that you want to do, that's a very significant piece of work. I don't think that Michelle or I have the bandwidth for that. And I think it would be also probably in your best interest just to have an independent third party.
All right, let's vote on this one then, to add a discussion carrying out a comprehensive comparison of each U.S.D. budget line item expenditures against other districts. Alex? You're muted.
No.
Christine?
No.
Jeremy?
Same.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Tim? Tari?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that one passes, and we will add that to a future agenda. So that wraps that up for this evening, and we are moving on to our discussion item.
Caitlin?
Yes?
I know you addressed in the leadership report, can we give just a minute of time to the enrollment analysis? Because the way I understand it, in your leadership report, what we're going to get at the end of October, I think is different than the original request.
Okay. Why don't I look that up for a minute before we adjourn, but I think...
Can we table that discussion only until the next meeting? And, you know, maybe just keep that for that time?
Sorry, table which discussion?
The enrollment to the next meeting. So maybe you and I can talk about it. The agenda request for enrollment.
Okay. Yeah, let me refresh my memory a little bit, and I'll get back to that.
Okay.
Okay. So we are, we do have a discussion item. This came from approved agenda request from last spring around board size. And so this would be an opportunity for us to discuss briefly this evening whether the topic of changing our board configuration is something that the board would want to learn more about. I think if the answer is yes, we would likely want to ask a small committee to do some initial research to bring back to the board. My suggestion would be, you know, sometime in the next two months of possible options. And the board would have a number of things to consider in terms of both legal and logistical pieces. If there was going to be a proposed change, we know that that involves an amendment to our articles, and that would likely involve the approval of our voters. So what I'd be looking for this evening is if there is interest on the board in doing that research that does not tie the board to proposing... in doing that research, that does not tie the board to proposing any change, endorsing any change, but merely getting some information about that possible different configurations for our board. So, Christine, I think you had made this original request, but I see Alex's hand, so I'll go to Alex first.
I, I just had a process question. If we're just voting on whether to put it on the agenda, it seems like people.
This one right now?
This one for a committee.
So, right now, this one about board size was an approved gender request. Now, we're gonna discuss it? If the discussion seems to indicate no interest, then that's that. If the discussion seems to indicate interest, we could ask a committee to then go do some more research on it. Does that make sense?
Yep, and Teresa, can I get you to mute, because we're listening to you typing?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thanks. All right. So, does anyone want to chime in on whether this is a topic that you would want to get some more information on and do some research here? Michael?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be a useful topic to do, because like, right now, we, everyone has two minutes. We're at half an hour before we even started, so, yeah.
Christine?
Yeah, um, so, again, I know a lot of people have talked about getting to one board person, one vote around the table. And so, this would be the way to do it, and I think it also would be timely to consider it, but because with the census going on right now, that's about to end, we're gonna have to reorganize the board. We might have to proportion votes anyway, so it just came, kind of seems to make a, you know, a good time to do it, and I'm, I'm happy to work with whomever to do more research on it. I think that having gone through the process of doing the articles before, there's a lot of previous research and knowledge that I, I still have, and I can rely on in helping move it forward, helping get more information if people want to.
Great, Lisa?
Just clarification, does the one person, one vote refer to kind of getting rid of the weighted vote system, so there would be one rep for? What, I guess, what is, A, what does that mean? I'm not familiar with that exactly, and then, B, I was gonna ask. Oh, is there an option of, and maybe this was probably discussed when we wrote the original articles, of, of all of, since we're supposed to be representing all of the towns, of all of the towns voting on all of the reps? So, that actually feels kind of true? Is that something that could come into this conversation?
Certainly, and there are towns that have some, if not all, or some districts that have some, if not all, at-large members, like you're talking about, Lisa. Jonathan?
Yeah, I have the same question. I mean, it's not clear to me how reducing the board size would make it easier to get rid of the weighted votes unless somehow, you know, the votes weren't, weren't being drawn at town line, so maybe, Christine, you could help me understand a little better what you mean by that as well.
Well, real quickly, if we had a smaller board, say, with like eight or nine people, I think each person would more closely represent what their town's apportionment was. So, you might only have one person from Fenton, that's their 10 and a half percent. One person from Warren, that's their 13%. There might be a little bit of weighting, but there's not, it's not gonna be as big of an issue. I think on the old Harwood Board, there was weighting, but they usually only had to fall back on it when it was like a really close vote, so we, we probably wouldn't have to use it as much. And I think just having eight or nine people at the table is gonna facilitate things going a little bit more quickly. Hopefully. That answer?
Yeah, and you know, I think what we're hearing too is that there's a lot of complicated factors. If our board wanted to endorse a new configuration and put that to the voters, then there's also the question of how, if that change was approved, how that would be rolled in. And so, this committee could do some preliminary work to find out some of those answers, come back to the board, and then we might have a host of other questions to ask, or we might say, nope, stop, we're, we're good where we are. I'm gonna go to Alex and then Teresa.
Can you hear me? I was just gonna say, I mean, just to be clear, we can't take away the weighting. I mean, every, the percentages, you're still representing a percentage of your town, so the, to Christine's point, the individual, there are fewer individuals, but the vote, the vote weighting is part of our, our const-, whatever, our, you know, the, the amendment, the way we've structured our whole district, so we're not changing that. It would be just the number of people on the board.
I'm not entirely sure if we did consider a proposal, or what Lisa mentioned about all at large. I don't know if we even can legally, but that would be a very different model. Teresa?
I think Michael is in front of me. Michael, did you want to go?
He had, he had spoken once to it, so that's why I wanted to go.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it. I'm just kind of curious of what problem we're trying to solve. I, I don't know that, you know, having the board, or going in half, or whatever that might look like, or even, you know, eight to 10. I, I don't see that really changing the dynamics of the board that dramatically, quite frankly. I mean, Mansfield has 15 people, you know, CVU has, I think, 15 or 16. Even the Granville Hancock Board has like five or six, and they don't even have a single school in their district. And so, you know, if, if we're trying to solve a sort of a team dynamics problem, then I don't think this is the right solution, because, you know, it, it's kind of not gonna matter if you're seven, or you're 28, or you're 14. But, you know, those dynamics are still gonna be there. If we're trying to solve something else, then I'm, I'm maybe a little bit more interested, but, you know, my initial gut is, you know, it's pretty disenfranchising, right, to, I, I think it's important to have at least two from every town represented, unless we're gonna go out large. And because, you know, even though Tim and I think a lot alike on a lot of topics, there's a fair amount that we don't think alike on, and we represent different people. And I think that's gonna be really important. I think it's disenfranchising. And, you know, it seems like this would be the kind of thing that we'd absolutely need to bring into, in front of voters, because I believe it's part of the Articles of Agreement. And, you know, I think Vermont is like, you know, 10th in the nation in terms of voter participation. We'd like being enfranchised. And so, you know, I just don't see that going over well with our general public, and I don't know why we would sort of do that, unless there is a real problem that we're trying to solve that is not team dynamics. Thank you.
Tari?
I'd just add that this isn't something that I feel strongly about, but if other people do feel strongly, I'm happy, and they want to do some light work, I'm happy to consider their thoughts and see what they think another model might offer, and if, but it, it doesn't strike me as something that would be like my first run-out at problem.
If I were to ask now for anyone interested in doing this work to look into it, could you indicate either with a blue hand or your hand in the camera, whether you'd be interested in that work? Okay, I'm seeing Christine, and I'm seeing Michael and Alex. Okay, so we do have some people who are willing to do the work. What I would then suggest is we could have a committee. I want to be mindful that this is warned as a discussion item. With that said, Tari and I talked about this a little bit today, and I felt like if we had a committee set up to get started on this work, we could do so because it's a purely research project. Here's how I'll ask it. Would there be any objection from the board to establishing a short-term committee tonight to study the topic of board configuration options? All right, I'm not hearing any objections to that. So now, I see one from Teresa.
Caitlin, I, I think that scope is too narrow, you know, or too, actually, it's too broad, probably. I think we, for me to kind of get behind that, it would be, what problem are we trying to solve? And then, I could, you know, commit to having a committee to do that, you know what I mean? Like, without a problem to solve, I don't know why we'd be looking at various configurations.
Fair enough. Here's what I'm gonna suggest. Alex, do you want, actually, do you want to give a suggestion here in terms of what that might be?
I mean, I don't understand why we can't just take a vote on whether we want to establish a research committee, but we, it's warned on the agenda as an item we're discussing, so we're not taking a vote to do anything other than do some research, so.
Yeah, no, procedurally, I don't have any problem with that this evening.
Motion?
Sure.
To form a committee to research whatever the agenda item was. I, I don't know exactly how you had it phrased on the agenda.
Boards, board size options?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let me make sure that the language is correct here. Does that look fine, Alex? Form a committee to research board size, configuration options, and report back to the board with their findings? Hope you're on mute.
I was gonna say, I would just call it a question, because we've already had the discussion. I don't think we need to have a further discussion.
I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment, please.
Okay, I think I did hear a second. Did I hear the second, Tari?
I was actually just gonna ask Alex if I'd gotten, if I'd done a good job with what she had in mind. I added a few words that I thought I'd heard over the course of the discussion.
Okay.
And I'm happy to second what's on the board. Okay, so I'm happy to second that.
Teresa, what do you have as your amendment?
Configuration options and the pros and cons of each.
Okay, to add the language and the pros and cons of each. Is there a second on the amendment? Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the amendment to add in the pros and cons of each after the word options. All right, Alex?
I'm gonna vote against that, because I think that's offensive.
Christine? No, I, we can't hear you.
I'm gonna vote against that either, because I think it, it's, it shortchanges everyone's intelligence. We know what we're doing.
Jeremy?
I'll vote yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Teresa? Teresa, I'm assuming yes, since it was.
Yeah. I have, I've been very good about getting back on mute, Alex.
Yeah, Tim?
Yes.
Tari?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll add that language. So now, the motion reads to form an ad hoc committee to research board size configuration options and report back to the board. I'm sorry. Board size configuration options and the pros and cons of each, and report back to the board with their findings. All right, so we're going to take our vote on that motion as amended. Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Saying no.
Kelly?
Ah, yes.
Kristen?
Come back to me, please.
Sure, Lisa?
Yes.
Great, Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Tim? Yes, Tari?
Yes.
And Kristen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I heard three volunteers. I heard Christine, Alex, and Michael. Is there anyone else interested in that committee? Okay, I don't think we need a formal motion. What I would ask is, are there any objections to Christine, Alex, and Michael comprising this ad hoc committee? Okay, hearing no objections, we will ask them to get started with their work, and they can let us know when they are ready to report back to the board. Okay. Thank you all. Next up this evening, we have communications, so I think we would be looking for some folks who are willing to draft a recap this week. And I know that given the earlier motion, and while we did some clarification, I think this recap could also indicate that we intend to take up the middle school implementation for further clarification and discussion at the next board meeting. Anyone interested? All right, Tari and Christine, thank you. All right, we will do our best and get that out this weekend. Any other communications for this week?
Is there anyone who voted against the motions, who might be willing to do a review, just to help us make sure we're accurately doing?
I'm happy to do a review.
That'd be great. Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, that's great. Okay. Then we have our consent agenda at the end of our, the end of our agenda. So, I would be looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll move.
I hear that from Tim. Jeremy, are you seconding? Okay. Alex?
I would like to take out the investigative review at the end and vote on that separately. I don't know the, how you do that logistically, but that's.
I think what we've done is that if one board member requests that we do so, and so then, we would vote on the consent agenda without that, and we'll move that to a separate action item.
Okay.
All right. So, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as amended? All right, so that will pass, and.
Have any abstentions?
Thank you. Any abstentions from the consent agenda? Okay, so that passes unanimously, and then our final motion would be to accept Attorney Coogan's investigative report. So, I'll let Tari finish that up.
I'm sorry, Tari, I was on mute. I'm abstaining, please, from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay. The final motion then. Alex, would you like to make that motion?
I move to accept the investigator review of 9/11/2020 from Attorney Ellen Coogan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. I would expect that we would be ready to vote on this, unless I hear otherwise. Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen? Kristen, I would think you were mute.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Teresa?
Abstaining.
Tim?
Also abstaining, thank you.
Tari? And I will vote yes. And I will vote yes. All right, that will pass. I will note that I think every, all board members were, you know, given the opportunity to read the report. And so I appreciate the efforts made to make that happen and to put this to conclusion. All right, I think we are done for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you in a few weeks, thanks folks.
Thanks guys.
All right.